Yes, sir, I am.
Good morning. The Board of Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The Board will now enter as the executive session. The Board of Education will reconvene at this time.
There we go.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. Thank you very much. Apologize for the lateness of beginning this meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented with the resumption of our earlier executive session following a break for lunch today.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Move right into Board reports. First, I want to introduce Serena Lee, our new student board member. She's with us today for the first time. Welcome, Serena. Mrs. Allen, we'll start with you.
Recently, I was asked to do a presentation before the Lenartown Rotary on Common Core and the Race to the Top. And there were a very attentive audience, and they asked some really good questions. It's a wonderful opportunity to help better, people better understand what it is, how we got here, and how we are progressing with all of this. So, I appreciate having been asked and the opportunity to share that with the group.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Washington?
I attended a farewell reception for Theo Kramer, who is the Director of Career in College Readiness Center and at the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. He is moving on. He will be going to Prince George's County as the Executive Director of Human Resources. We will miss him, but this is an upward mobility position for him, and he's working on his doctorate at University of Penn, so I wish him his best. He served us very well in the nine years that he has been here.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Matthews?
I had some free time the other day, and I thought I'd take an opportunity to run over and take a quick peek and see what the Captain Walter Francis Duke School is doing. And it is moving along great. Got steel beams up, concrete all over the place, and I swear it seems like a thousand people are working there. They're going quick, and they're working well, and I'm excited, and we'll just keep plugging those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
I went to three, I've done a lot of things. I know we're only supposed to talk about one, but I went to all three graduations. Then I went to yesterday to Mr. Kramer's party at the Forrest Center. He's a wonderful, wonderful man. He'll be a big loss to us. Then I went on, what did I do on my vacation? I went fishing. And the fish, I love to fish. The fish are now biting the flounder at Chink Tig. They didn't bite at all last year, and for the first time in my history of 25 years, I caught not one fish, but this time I did, and had a great time doing it. So, you can go back there and go fishing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Serena, I notice it's your first time, but maybe you want to interject something?
Yeah, I have some time. Before I officially started as a student member, I attended the Youth Drug Summit held in May. I thought the content really connected to all of those who attended, and all of the activities presented their messages in unique ways. Drug use in our students is a topic of interest to me because everyone is affected directly or indirectly. Unfortunately, a student doesn't even have to use drugs to feel like on campus.
Thank you. Because I've been on vacation and came back, and just like everybody else, in the past week and a half, I spent some time with my granddaughter, who came up from Memphis, whom I haven't seen in two or three years. And we had a great time. She's going to be nine years old next week, and she left Sunday to go back to Memphis with her father. I enjoyed that. Family did, and it's nice to be with family, and it's unfortunate that families get spread out sometimes all over this country, and you don't have enough of time, or more time, spent with grandchildren and your own children sometimes, because everybody is involved in working and doing their own thing and progressing and being good citizens. So, that's what's been in my life the past three or four weeks. In any event, moving on, Dr. Mariano, Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you, Board members. Good morning, and it's great to see everybody here in the summer showing up for our meeting, our one meeting in July. And I want to start with our Work Hard Be Nice Awards for the month of June. We ended the year on such a good note, as you know, as some of you referenced graduations, et cetera, but I want to acknowledge Stephanie Berry, Diane Carroll, Carol Cole, Amy Downs, Janet Fowler, Regina Greeley, Barbara Higgs, Nina Hunt Wathan, Ann Johnson, Connie Kenny, Kimberly Oliver, Kim Pearl, Julie Tippett, Barbara Turner, Angela Villanueva, I think I got that right, Darren Witscale, and we celebrate all of them for the month of June 2014. Give them a round of applause. We need a little applause here this morning, if we could. It's amazing how many of these awards have been issued since with the inception of those. Over 2,000 awards have been issued, and those are all to acknowledge and memorialize random acts of improvement, random acts of kindness, and they just go a long way in terms of the morale and acknowledgement. Board members, at this time of the year, I'm constantly asked questions, you know, in the community. What do you and the teachers and the staff members do all summer now that the students are not in school? So, I feel like that's a dissertation in many ways, but I have to distill it down to say that in many ways during the summer months, the work is just as robust, just as plentiful, and just as aggressive as it is during the regular school year, because we're planning, we're preparing. As we open the schools back up in August, there's a lot of work that has to occur to get ready for that. It just doesn't happen by accident. It happens by design. So, at this time of the year, you can imagine Human Resources is just abuzz with applicants. I've shared with you, obviously, we're in the process of hiring teachers for this year. Want to make certain we have the most highly qualified teacher for every one of our young people at the beginning of the school year, and that process will continue. The word is that we're right on track with where we need to be with our hiring, and we continue. Lots of preparation and training and curriculum writing occurring with our teachers, and buildings are being cleaned. I appreciate Mr. Matthews showing us the progress on Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, saying that whole word, the whole name. With that, it will be next year at this time that we will be opening that school. So, we've got to keep in mind, you know, how quickly that will progress in that sense, and Brad's looking at the deadlines associated with that. The conversation about Spring Ridge are moving forward in that sense, and lots of construction and maintenance and work orders occurring over the summer. So, lots of great, robust preparation is occurring. I have a number of our directors here from our Triple S.T. support team who are managing lots of work in that sense. At the same time, it's a bittersweet time, as many of you have known. You have acknowledged that, so we mentioned Mr. Kramer, I want to give a little more highlight to that as well. We've had a very stable team of school system leaders during my tenure, and I'm very proud of that because the metrics are, you know, off the charts, there's great performance indices, qualitative and quantitative, and we're very proud of that. Doesn't happen again by accident, by design, with our great teachers, our support staff, and all the leaders within the school district, all working together with those arrows pointing in the same direction. But, as stated on many occasions, to every season, there's a time, and it's now a different season for a number of our employees, and we've had the departure recently of a number of our employees who are moving on to different positions, and I wanted the community to acknowledge that. Our Director of IT, Jim Kornes, who's been with us for the last five years, has moved on to a position, a cabinet-level position, a higher position in Washington County. It's closer to his family where he's from, and he moved his family down here about five, six years ago, and we thank him for the work that he did, and I honor the work that he did based upon the fact of his focus on innovation and moving us to the next level in terms of the great pushes that we've put out there in terms of technologies. I remember the STEM for All grant, we pushing on iPads, the conversation about tech books, one-to-one computing, those conversations have started in those technology arenas, and looking for what those next great pieces of technology that are out there, because as we know, my goodness, with the rapid information explosion, things are happening so quickly, and we want to make certain we're using the best items for our young people and using our resources in the most judicial way. So, we acknowledge Mr. Kornes, who's left us, and we are in the process of filling that position, interviewing for that, and the name for consideration for the Board is there as well, and we will hopefully have an announcement with that position here by the end of the week. Also, you've acknowledged Mr. Theo Kramer. Mr. Kramer is someone who has been with us, I came in 2005, and he came shortly thereafter. Mr. Kramer is moving to Prince George's County as the Executive Director of Human Resources. Mrs. Washington alluded to the fact that he is working on his doctorate. He is a spectacular professional. I spoke at the end of his event yesterday, where we had some formality at the end and acknowledgement, and a true gentleman as well, a true gentleman as well as his commitment to the work. He's very loyal, he was very loyal to the system, but also, it's a time in his life where it's transitioned. He's got two young children who are very talented. If you remember, they were standing here one day, and I dubbed them affectionately as the Work Hard Be Nice Girls, and that little label has stuck with them, and I'm, you know, doing some adjustments in my office, I've recently come across that picture as well of them, they're growing up, and many of them, both of them are very talented in the arena of the arts, one particularly in ballet. So, we wish him well in his travels, and he will be connected with me for life. Deb Pierce, one of our individuals in special education, as you know, she has been a solid individual there for a number of years, probably been with the school system 20, yeah, 20-plus years, very clearly focused on the IEPs, very knowledgeable about the legality of the process. She has, has some conversation with me prior as well upon her promotion in Prince George's County to what is called Tanglewood, which is a school, a special needs school, and she'll be serving as the principal there, and we're very proud of her as well. The Superintendent in Prince George's County and I are very, very good colleagues and friends. We've known each other for 25 years, and he had a heyday the day he called for references on both of them. So, good for, good for them, good for everybody as people move forward, and we're rapidly moving forward with filling the positions that we have vacancies. But I just want to let you know that those are some top leadership positions, which in our school system, we usually don't have a number of those vacancies. This is probably the highest number we've had, and moving that forward as well. So, Board members, I turn it back to you, Dr. Raspa, for the continuation of this agenda, which is not overly loaded with information as we continue. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Mariano. There are no recognitions today. Madam Secretary?
She's doing her aerobics to get the ball.
One public comment? Yeah, there's no public hearing today. Okay, please bear with me as I read the public comment statement. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the Superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students, since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary, who will distribute copies to all Board members." Okay, Madam Secretary?
Courtney Dowling. Don't add any, or negative comments. All right, Dr. Mariano? My name's Courtney Dowling. I've been the Uniserve Director assigned to CEASMIC, the ESP group here in St. Mary's County, and I just wanted to inform you today that I will be transferring to Charles County full-time. I just want to say thank you for the time that I've had here. I've been here for six years in June. It was my first job as a Uniserve Director, so I've learned a lot, some bumps in the beginning, but I learned a lot from our members, Faith Abernathy, Jill Morris, I've learned as much from them as hopefully they've learned from me, and I'll be sad to leave them and go up the road, but it's exciting, new change for me as well. Dan Bessek is here today. He's going to be my replacement, as well as Meg McDonald's replacement, who retired June 30th from working with SMAS, so assignment's still a little up in the air, but he will be taking my place, so I just wanted to share that with you today.
Thank you very much.
May I say something?
Yes.
So, Courtney, six years? Wow. How time flies, we're having fun. My goodness, I mean, I remember our first meeting, quite frankly, and I appreciate and value your contributions. I mean, you have been nothing but a supporter of your members, and I say that very respectfully because every time you meet with me, it's about the agenda in terms of the advancement of working with the membership and the employees. We've done some great collaborative work together. We think about our orientations, we think about a number of joint efforts, and even in terms of language that we've put in our contract that the Board gave parameters and endorsed. It was all about parity. We were talking about the conversations between the units, and I wish you well. I can't believe it's, yeah, well, yeah, we'll talk about that another time. Not ready to even have that acknowledgement, but I wish you well, and you're only moving to Charles, but I've really watched you grow into the position from being that novice, entry-level position to where you are now, and I'm very proud of you as well. So, keep up the great work. And the gentleman's name again is?
Dan Bessek.
Welcome, Dan.
Thanks.
Welcome to the work you'll find that the organization, working with this Board, we may not always agree, but we're not disagreeable in that process. We try not to be, and we try to find common ground, and I think as we talk about a lot of our, sort of where we've been, and acknowledgement of where we're going to move forward, there's been a lot of solid work, and we always have to focus in on that positive and find the common ground in terms of collaboration opportunities to move things forward as well. So, welcome, and to both of you, thank you for your support too. Jill and Faith, very good. I wanted to say that because she is leaving us, so I want to have a little more time to say that. Give her a round of applause.
Congratulations. Madam Secretary? Thank you. Consent agenda, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion? Oh, do we have a second? Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving right on into action items. The first action item is the indefinite quantity contract for general construction. Mr. Harwood and Mr. Clements. Nice to see you again, Mr. Harwood.
Nice to see you as well. Board members, this is a very important contract that permits us to efficiently procure small construction projects under $500,000 and to quickly respond to school system needs, such was the case last year with the fire at Spring Ridge Middle School. We used this indefinite quantity contract to both respond to the need to have a modular unit brought down to that location and all the work that we did within the school itself. This contract is heavily used by the Department of Design and Construction, but is also heavily used by the Department of Maintenance. Because of the kind of undefined nature of the work and the range of possible work under this contract, this was a quality-based procurement whereby both technical qualifications and price are evaluated. And for this procurement, we basically said 50% of the score would be technical, 50% would be price. The RFP was advertised on E-Maryland Marketplace on May 22, 2014. We had 12 firms express an interest in the proposal. Eight firms submitted our responses on June 5, 2014. The submission to the proposers, there were some errors, was the proposal from Global Builders. They notified us several days into the evaluation process that they had made a serious error in their pricing, and they requested withdrawal. And in the case of Blazer Enterprises, they submitted an incomplete pricing proposal, so we had to deem them as non-responsive for this procurement. A total of 200 points was assigned to the evaluation. Technical qualifications evaluations were based on the firm's experience, the subcontractors that it proposed, and their ability to respond rapidly to our work request. We also had a number of pass fail criteria, such as a suitable surety, a sufficient surety for this project, and contract affidavit, and the sex offender certification. Because of the potential use of this contract for QZAB projects in the future, QZAB projects are allocated by the state, but the sources of those funds are federal funds, so those projects fall under the provision of Davis Bacon. So, in terms of the pricing, we ask for both a non-wage scale pricing and a wage scale pricing for the project. We ask for hourly rates for 22 labor classifications as part of this contract, and then because a large amount of the work that we envision under this contract in the coming year is related to the door hardware modifications that we've talked about, where classroom locks are either replaced or modified so the teachers can lock the doors from the inside. So, that's a good part of what we're envisioning. So, we ask for specific unit prices for the installation of the hardware throughout the system, so that gave us another pricing index. Based on the total evaluation, we provided this for you. This is the ranking out of 200 points. WM Davis Incorporated had the highest score of 187, ranked first, followed by closely by Dennis Anderson Construction, Tuckman Barbie, Schiabel, MS Enterprises, and Colossal Contractors. So, that was the ranking for the project, for the procurement. We also have under the procurement, the provisions, that if we have multiple awards, that we can make multiple awards, as we have in the past, that we can ask all awardees to provide a lump sum proposal based on a specific scope of work, and that's really helpful when we have larger jobs with a lot of coordination. The term of the contract is for one year, was two one-year renewals. And then, we are asking that in order to be efficient in awarding these individual projects, that you authorize the Superintendent to award purchase orders up to $50,000 without further Board approval. Projects beyond that $50,000 would be presented to the Board for their approval. We do anticipate using the contract for FY 2014 Security Initiative, FY 2015 Aging Schools, and 2015 QZAB. Our most pressing need at the moment is for the Security Initiative. There are six schools that we'd like to get underway shortly, and so based on the unit prices that were submitted, WM Davis had the lowest unit prices for the types of locks that we will be replacing in those six schools. But let me show you the potential purchase orders going to WM Davis. The largest is Lenartown High School, where we're replacing over 100 Unilocks, followed by Lenartown Middle School, about 40 locks, Esperanza's about the same size, George Washington Carver to Lexington Park, those are all in the range of 20 to 25 locks. And I will tell you that the majority of this cost is the hardware itself, and we've established a unified, consolidated price with the manufacturer of these locks. So, and in reality, the labor required for each one of these is about 10% of that total dollar amount. So, we are asking as part of this approval today that you approve the purchase order to WM Davis for the locks at Lenartown High School in the amount of $66,194.21. So, that's the procurement, and we'd like to take your questions.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
The, on the locks project in particular, what's the timeline for accomplishing this?
For the Security Initiative?
Yes.
It's about a four to six-week lead time on the locks themselves, and we have notified the manufacturers, they've been part of this whole process on the locks. We anticipate that we can do all six of these schools by December of 2014.
Okay. And for the locks project itself, what is the total budget for that particular project?
For Lenartown High School?
No, for, in other words, for the Security Initiative, remind me how much money we have in the capital budget for this particular?
I think with state and local, we're probably of the magnitude of $400,000, Kim? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And with respect to the general request of the Superintendent being able to approve projects up to $50,000, first, other than the locks project that you have shown here, what other projects, what scope, would you expect that to be utilized in?
Actually, the particular type of hardware that we're replacing at these schools is the most expensive.
Okay.
So, I don't expect any of the other security initiatives to go over $50,000.
Okay. And then, lastly, and perhaps this is a question for the Superintendent, if we decide to go forward with granting the ability to approve contracts of $50,000 or less, is it just for these construction kinds of things? Is it overall within the entire school system? And in what way will the Board be notified with respect, once the Superintendent has given the approval, how will the Board be notified so that we can do our due diligence?
Sure, sure, great. One, this would only apply, two, this indefinite quantity contract.
Okay.
To make it an efficient process. Two, we would put the contract awards as we do the change orders in our, once we update to the Board.
Right.
We would do that as well.
Okay.
Yep.
And everything you said is accurate, just for this particular one, is what we want to emphasize with that. Okay, very good.
That, I appreciate that. That, I'm, I think, knowing that this is an ongoing project that the Board has been briefed on in public session, and the fact that we know for the sake of it... on in public session, and the fact that we know for the sake of efficiency, because of our meeting schedule, it can make it difficult to bring these things to the board, and for the sake of making sure that our students and our staff have the ability to lock themselves into their rooms, I'm in favor of going forward under these circumstances.
Ms. Allen, I think you were asking, other than the lock, what projects would these be used for? We don't really have any defined like now, but as Mr. Hardwick said, emergency things that come up, such as the fire at Spring Ridge last year. And occasionally, there are some other things that maintenance would do, which are usually $10,000 or less anyway, but we're trying to move something ahead quickly. So, and we've had a similar one of these in place that has expired in June, so it's similar. Also, the $50,000 threshold is where the contractor is required to have labor, material, and performance bonds. So that was another reason why we cut off at that point.
That makes sense.
And as you can see, you know, the 34, 33, it's over 25, but no, not near the 50.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Mrs. Washington?
Could you just update the citizens on the background for this? Why are we doing this, and what precipitated this, and what we gonna do?
Are you specifically on the security?
Yes.
Initiatives?
Yes.
And Mr. Wyatt is here, but as part of the Sandy Hook, as that tragedy took place, started looking at how we can lock classrooms. And arts classrooms, as across the whole country, were designed where you have to go into the hall with a key most times and lock the door from the hallway, which would mean the possibility of our teachers and staff being exposed to an event taking place. So this initiative where Ms. Howe, Mr. Hardwick, and Mr. Wyatt have worked together closely with the manufacturer, looked at different options. Howe could be locked from inside the classroom, looking at the view, the windows, beside the window or in the door, how that, we're looking at that as well. So this is really trying to be part of that initiative for safety, where occupants in the building could get the doors locked from within without being exposed. And we've looked at a lot of different ways. As Mr. Hardwick said, the manufacturer, we're not trying to keep the same hardware as much as we can without having to buy new every place and everything, so it's a pretty good process. And we're looking to work through all of our schools. So every place where this is at, it'll all take place. And we've even linked it with a grant, because we didn't have quite a bunch of money, Ms. Howe's linked them to a grant, where we'll do that, and also install some cameras in our larger elementary schools.
Wonderful. I appreciate the effort in taking the recommendations from the study that was done at Sandy Hook so that we can make our students and staff safe. So I think this is wonderful, and I'm sure other initiatives, like you say, the way the doors configured to glass and things like that will be considered next. So thank you, Mr. Wyatt, and Mr. Clements, and Mr. Hardwick. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, guys. Makes sense? Could you, is it an electronic lock, or is it just a manual lock that locks from the inside?
Yeah, it's a manual mechanical lock.
Okay. Just expensive.
They are very, like the panic hardware on Doors Run, anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500.
Wow.
So a regular door lock is in that area of $600.
$600.
One door.
One-door lock, wow.
How much?
$600.
Actually, it's $548 per lock.
Yeah, yeah. Those locks are very expensive.
It's a heavy commercial-grade lock.
Right, yeah. It's safe.
Mrs. Crosby?
I think it's a good idea. I read about the locks, we discussed them last year, I believe. I think it is. Thank you.
Sarita, you have any input on it, by any chance?
I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, action item, we need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the award of indefinite quantity contracts for general construction to WM Davis Incorporated, Dennis Anderson Construction, and Tuckman Barbie Construction Company. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to approve purchase orders under this contract up to an amount of $50,000 without additional Board of Education approval. The Board of Education further authorizes the use of the contract for fiscal year 2014 Security Initiatives and fiscal year 2015 QZAB projects, including $66,194.21 to WM Davis Incorporated for door hardware modifications at Leonard Town High School.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next action item, board approval for a change order for the resurfacing of the Leonard Town High School stadium track. Mr. Clements and Mr. Hallwood?
Board members, I wanted to say a few words at the beginning of this one, because it is a large change order, and to give you the background of why that is. Mrs. Howe worked with Mr. Hardwick and estimated the total replacement of this contract in the neighborhood of $250,000. We've had approval for a little while, and Mr. Hardwick and I have been really investigating options on how we could resurface the track and be able to someday put down a synthetic field there. And we investigate a lot of different ways, and there's really not a good way to do that and ensure it. So we decided to move forward with redoing the track. It needed to be done. I know that Mrs. Allen has kept me up on that track from when your son was running it. So what we did was, we did some core drills to see if the subsurface was the condition of it. And the manufacturer, it suggested that we may need to mill it and put two inches of asphalt possibly, but with the core drills, we thought, well, let's bid it as just the resurfacing. Once we scrape it, we can observe it and see what we need to do, trying to minimize the dollar amounts that put into this, but make sure we have a quality job. So the track was stripped, and I'll let Mr. Hardwick can go into more detail, but basically, it's fairly sound appearance-wise, but a lot of the asphalt body of it is, you know, sort of dried up, if you will, in that sense. And that helps keep the life of the running surface going. So we turned out that, and this too, is all in a unit price, so we're paying the same if it had have been all in the unit, or as we're doing now with the change order, to do that, the milling and the asphalt work. So we're doing that. The current asphalt that's there is the original asphalt that, when the building was built, we were able to strip the running surface probably 12 to 15 years ago. I didn't go back to check the actual date, but we stripped it. The asphalt base was very fine. We were able to overlay it that time. This time, we feel we need some more extensive work on it. And the school and the school system will continue to look at how we might be able to get an artificial turf, a synthetic surface there, but in the meantime, we'll have the new running surface in place. Mary, is there anything you need to add?
That's great. Let me just kind of give you a little more detail, and I think we discussed this a little bit at the contract approval, that we really wouldn't know until we strip the running surface off the track. We did that, and then it was power washed, and then it takes a few days for the asphalt to kind of dry out, so you can really see it. And there was no doubt, looking at it, that it was heavily oxidized. And basically, what happens is asphalt really depends on the oil embedded in the asphalt to keep it somewhat flexible. And there's a chemical reaction that takes place over time where that oil is kind of broken down. Some people say it kind of gets dehydrated of oil, but really, the oil is broken down. So where it may look structurally sound, what happens is asphalt gets more and more brittle, and then you start getting small fractures. Water gets in the fractures and opens up. So in reality, if we had continued on the original course and just went ahead and laid the running surface on the existing asphalt, we probably would have been seeing signs of failure in two to five years. So we have worked with the contractor. This is a fairly standard recommendation to mill the existing asphalt down two inches, lay a paving fabric between the old asphalt, and then lay two inches of new asphalt on top of that, and then the running surface goes over the new asphalt. And I'll tell you that the prices for the milling and the prices for the asphalt are comparable to the prices we had in our indefinite quantity contract for asphalt repair several years ago. So it's a good competitive price, and as Mr. Clements said, basically, the beauty of a unit-priced contract is that everything's stipulated, including these contingencies. So it's not like a typical change order where you're kind of over the barrel, as it were, and you're having to negotiate the price. The price was set. We could have put that number in with the original proposal. We chose not to because we didn't really want to give up that money unless we needed to. And so this is an illustration of how our process works. We asked for a contingency of 25. This work is beyond that, so we're coming before the board to explain the process. So again, actually, the budget for the track was more like $330,000. So with this change order, we're going to be at $244,000. We would like to continue a $25,000 contingency to the end of this job. With that being said, with all those factors, we still have a positive fund balance on this project of about $60,000. We're on a tight schedule. We're looking to complete the work by September 5, and so your approval today is essential to us moving forward, so thank you.
All right. Board members, questions or comments? Sarita?
I was just saying, you saying the track is something that so many teams do on a regular basis, so I think that it's important to do this job correctly.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
I think we need to replace, it's the bottom part, right? We went down.
The top.
Very good. Oh, the top part.
The top part.
Okay, yeah, that's good. I'll go for that.
Mr. Matthews?
Thanks for double checking and triple checking on it. When they say they're going to add two inches of asphalt to the top of it, is that two inches, and then they compact it down, or? I'm just curious.
Two inches compacted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
I think it's all been said, but thanks again for taking the extra measures to ensure that the asphalt underneath the track was not compromised, and this helps us to be efficient with the resources that we have, and we wouldn't have to come back and revisit this project again. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Allen?
Since the school was built in 1974, and you say that that is the original surface, asphalt surface, it certainly is understandable that over the course of time, that it would have broken down in the way that it has. And so I definitely support moving forward in this, with the change order. I think the public also needs to understand that you are very cautious when you develop the request for funds overall in the budget, but we do have to allow for the fact that as with any project that you are moving forward with, you can run into unexpected circumstances. And it's not in the best interest in, for either efficiency or effectiveness, to have to keep going back to the commissioners to say, this isn't going to be enough, we're not going to be able to do this project. And we also have a long history of, once a project is accomplished and we know that it is completed and there's no more, there's no reason to expend any other, no need for other funds, that we have a long history of reviewing those projects and turning those funds back to the county. So what you're bringing forward makes sense, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that you're doing such a thorough job, not just for this school, but for all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Allen? Well, you know, things do deteriorate over time, there's no question about it, and it's always best to take a good look, as deep as we possibly can, especially in these kinds of projects, because like you say, we just don't want to go back in five years and say, oh my God, we didn't do this right. It's all deteriorated, and we're going to have to, you know, tear the whole thing up again to spend more money. So the board commends you for having that insight. Okay. Board members, we need a motion? Is this an action item?
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve a change order in the amount of $120,910 to American Tennis Courts Incorporated, pursuant to the terms and conditions of the National Cooperative Alliance Contract, NCPA Number 8 hyphen 2, for unforeseen conditions with the resurfacing of the Leonard Town High School stadium track.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next action item is land acquisition. Mr. Clements and Ms. Howe?
As Ms. Howe's coming up, I'd like a couple statements. Ms. Howe's going to fill you in on a piece of property that we've been working on for almost two years, and very exciting that we're able to move this forward. The property is an estate, and we'll go into how this is a little bit different than what we may have done before. And some of the siblings I have, I've been in touch with and have talked to me, and they are very excited about the property becoming a school site, a school on the property. The one person is a teacher in Anarondo County, and very excited about it, as we talked. And through our discussions, have been through our attorneys with Mr. Omeley's firm, Mike Leaf, and their attorneys. But we have, we're moving very close, and the one sibling couldn't help but call me and talk to me and share how excited she was about this. So I'm going to let Ms. Howe walk through. You authorized us to proceed with a letter of intent some time ago, and I'm going to let Ms. Howe walk through the dollars and how that's come to be and what the next steps are in that, so.
As we've talked over the last couple of meetings, we do have a need, and as Mr. Clements talked about, we've been looking for school sites for quite a few years. This is a proposed elementary school site, and as Mr. Clements said, we've been looking at this property for the last two years. Our capital improvements program calls for an elementary school site in the next six years in the capital improvements program. It's actually our next capital improvements program project after Captain Walter Francis Duke. We still have a need for capacity in the Lexington Park Development District. So we started a search. As we've talked about it before, we've looked over 190 sites. We're very fortunate to find, within the Lexington Park Development District, we were able to find a 68.31 acre parcel of property. It's in the Lexington Park Development District. It's within a certified priority funding area. It has water and it has sewer. It meets all of the requirements that we're going to be looking for as we go forward with Maryland Department of Planning Approval. So we're very fortunate to do that. The property is 68.31 acres. The, as Mr. Clements said, a letter of intent was offered for a purchase price of $775,800, which translates to $11,357 per acre, which for the development district is a very good price. What we are proposing now is to, with the board's approval, to enter into contract negotiations. As Mr. Clements said, this is a little different. This is a trust. It is currently being handled through Circuit Court of Maryland, and it is in the hands of two attorneys that are representing the four property, or four members of the trust. If approved today by the Board of Education to enter into contract negotiations, the two attorneys that are representing the four members of the trust will enter a motion into Circuit Court for approval of the contract, to enter into contract with us as well. We're working through those contracts. We're working through those contract documents with our attorney and their attorneys as well. So, it's a little different than what we've done before, because the court is approving the purchase approval, it will require their approval as well. So, what we have before you today is to enter into those contract negotiations for the purchase of a sixty-eight point three-one acre parcel, which has a potential for elementary school and other uses.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and everything is based on the letter of intent, which was dated July third, and executed by all parties.
Okay. Questions, comments? Mrs. Allen, so with you.
In all the time that I've been on the school board, to be able to secure two school sites, one for the high school, and possibly additional schools on that site, as well as a new elementary school, is just simply unheard of. And I feel like there should be fireworks going off to memorialize such a momentous occasion. I know from all of the briefings that Mr. Clements has done on the topic of land, that Mrs. Howe has done, that this has been a very challenging situation to address, and I really appreciate your attention to the details of all of this, and your patience in continuing to pursue appropriate pieces of land for us to be able to grow through. And as you say here, this, these two separate sites, especially the geographic difference between the two of them in terms of distance apart, I expect will serve our schools for a good time to come. So, thank you for all you've done to accomplish this.
Yes, and this being a sixty-eight acre parcel has the ability to definitely serve the elementary school need, but it definitely has the opportunity to be a multiple-use site again. And we start looking at our long-term needs. We have the multiflora site in the northern portion of the county that we are looking at, and continuing to explore that through the feasibility study. It's definitely a multi-use site. We are looking at something that's going to put us into the next fifteen to twenty years, both in the northern portion of the county and in the southern development district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
It is very difficult to find land that meets all the requirements at a reasonable price, and especially in a development district, because it has sewer, water, and other amenities. And this one meet all the requirements. The LOI has been issued, it's in the development district, and I agree to enter into contract negotiations. So, but what I would like for you to do is answer the question, so the citizens will know. They say it's land everywhere, you know, what's wrong with the school system? Can you, do you have a list? I know it's a whole laundry list. Could you familiarize the citizens with the things that are needed in order for a site to be acceptable to build a school, so they'll know it's stringent, there are stringent requirements?
As I started off my presentation with, we've looked at around a hundred-and-ninety sites. We really want to be in a development district. We would like to have water and sewer, we'd like to have access to natural gas if at all possible, but the main constraints that we're looking for is the air installation compatible use zone. We look at the airport environment, so those are some constraints that, while they bring us great environment, our great economic booms to our county, they do constrain us because we do have to make sure that for our schools, we're staying out of those areas because they're not conducive to being compatible with a school. So, that starts to take a big chunk of the county out. Then we have to look at the land that's already been developed, and we started with that process, and we used our geographic information system, and we put those two components on there, the air compatible use zone and airport environment, and we took those parcels out. We looked at everything that was already developed, and then we looked at everything that was greater than fifteen acres, because that's right around where we want to be for an elementary school. We looked at everything that was currently developed, that wasn't out, and then we started looking at pieces that we could pull together. Then you have to start looking at wetlands of state concern, you have to start looking at areas that have endangered species, and you start to eliminate a lot of parcels. We have to look at sightlines and distance of roads to make sure we have road frontage so that we can get buses and traffic in safely. So, you start to eliminate a lot of parcels of land. That's easy enough in elementary school, it's fifteen acres. When you start going up to a middle school or a high school, and you start getting into thirty-five, fifty acres for a middle school, you start getting into fifty to seventy-five acres for a high school, you start to eliminate a lot of parcels. The other thing is, the development districts are not very large. You're talking Leonard Town or Lexington Park, most of that has already been developed. So, then you start looking into the rural areas, and that's where we have to start working with the Maryland Department of Planning to get that exemption, which is what we're doing with multiflora, to get an exemption to be outside, because we could not find a high school site that was inside, which is why the parcel we're bringing before you today is so special. It's inside the development district, it's in the right area to be geographically located where the students are that need to be served, and it has water and sewer, all the things that we need to make it a school site. We have around fifty points that we have to meet when we start going in and looking for the criteria to meet for Maryland Department of Planning Approval.
Thank you.
I was going to say, may I piggyback onto that? I didn't hear you mention one that I know you've talked about before, highly erodible soils.
Yes, soil conditions, steep slopes, all of those are going to be very crucial to what we're able to look at. The topography of the land, if it's got a lot of those steep slopes, in Saint Mary's County, you're going to find that. How much of it is already forested? Because if we take down forests, and we have to plant the forest back somewhere, that's called reforestation. So, a lot of those things become very important. The last piece of it that's very, very important, owner interest. That's going to be a key piece, sort of, if we have owner interest in it. A lot of them are already under development, if they're the large tags, if not, they're very difficult to find.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for enlightening everyone on at least fifty checkpoints that you have to go through in order for it to even be considered. Then you have to take it to the clearinghouse, correct?
Yes, it has to go through the clearinghouse, and that's all of the state agencies that are going to be important. You're going to have State Highway, you're going to have Maryland Department of the Environment, all of the agencies that are going to be responsible for the process. Once a project gets turned over to Mr. Hartwick and his team, they're going to have to go through the process of getting all the approvals to build the school. So, the clearinghouse has all those agencies look at it in the advance of you purchasing the property to make sure that it's going to be a buildable site.
It's a lot of work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, Mrs. Howe, Mr. Clements. You checked all the boxes on this one, you did a great job. I, believe me, I know how hard it is to find the right piece of property and get everybody willing to agree to do everything. So, keep up the great work, thank you very much, and I think we deserve a little bit of round of applause on this one. It's a new school site, it's exciting.
This is exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
I think it's wonderful, too, but I have a couple questions. Where is the new high school eventually slated to be built? My daughter keeps asking me about that one.
Well, that is what we're currently doing right now. We've entered into a feasibility study for a parcel in Mechanicsville, which is known as the multiflora site. That's what we're currently doing.
She said, why, this is what she said, why Mechanicsville, mother? There are more people down in another area. And I said, well, Maryland, no, she's Stacy, they project, we do a good job projecting how many people we're going to have. Is that what it's based on, the projection?
It's based on several factors. One, we do have a very large portion of student population in the fifth district, which is where the site is currently located, but we've also done an exhaustive search, and at this point, that was the site that was deemed to be the most feasible, based on all of the criteria we were able to meet. And trying to find, meet all of those criteria, trying to find a site in the development district, up to that point of getting to contract negotiations, we were not able to find a site at that time.
Okay, thank you. Now I have a good answer.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Sarita, you have any comments about?
I don't have any comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, action item, we need a motion.
I move...
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education authorize staff to negotiate and execute a contract of sale in accordance with the terms of the letter of intent dated July third, two thousand fourteen, for the purchase of sixty-eight point three-one acres in Lexington Park, Maryland, known as the Elif Robert R. Junior et al. property for the specified amount for a future elementary school site.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Mrs. Howe, thank you very much. Dr. Maradona, you have any final comments about this particular item?
I just think it's, Mrs. Allen said it very clearly, that this is a very difficult and arduous process, very challenging. And this is the first time, I think, in the history that I can remember during my tenure, where we actually have banked land, in the sense, for future needs. Many of the more expanding school districts across the nation do that on a regular basis. We've not had that opportunity because of some of the challenges that we've been presented with, and have been defined and vetted here. But I'm actually transitioning, as you know, and I'm very pleased that this is something that we've been able to take care of, because this will be something that continues to give for many years to come, that meets the needs of our growing school system. But also, I provide a word of caution, that I expect this board to continue to serve as strong advocates as we build these schools in the future, that the funding needs to be there to support the instructional program, too, and the operating budget. So, there's a process through this, this is a major component and piece to it, many steps to go as we define that, in terms of the funding process for the capital, but also never lose sight of the funding that's necessary for the operational pieces, and to have the quality teachers necessary, and to outfit it. And the expectation, too, is that, the conversation about the high school, is that, think about the aspect of, when you build a brick and mortar school, you're building it for future children that problems and environment, educational environments have yet to be defined. So, that's an incredible opportunity, because these buildings will last fifty-plus years, if not longer. And they have to be innovative, and they have to meet the needs, but I'm also expecting a conversation will occur in charrettes, or however that proceeds, to be innovative and think outside the box in terms of non-traditional ways of approaching that, with public partner, public-private partnerships, as well as looking at ways to maximize community needs as well, fine arts programs, et cetera, whatever they may be. But these are rare and unique opportunities for community, to build a high school, and to build elementary schools as well. And so, the thought that's gone into Evergreen, the thought that has gone into Captain Walter Francis Duke, I know those expectations will be there for the other schools that we have slated, but my summary comments are strictly predicated on the understanding that hooray to everybody, hooray to the board, hooray to the commissioners, hooray for the funding to do this. This is a big piece of work that has dominated, I know my entire tenure of conversations, I can't even tell you how many pieces of property that have been reviewed in front of my eyes during that time. There would be a metric to go back and figure that out, hundreds and hundreds. So, when you ask the question about our citizens, Mrs. Washington, I mean, it's a great challenge to get where we are today, and I feel very satisfied with this proposal that's moved forward, the action that's occurred, the action that has occurred on the other ones as well. It's a big day, it's a big step.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, great job. Okay, there are no information items today. The next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty-fourteen, at nine a.m. Board members, we have a work session slated right after the adjournment of this meeting on policies, J-Policies first reading, and Policy EED first reading. And after the work session, the board will take a lunch break, and then come back and enter into executive session. We'll take a five-minute break after the adjournment. This meeting is adjourned.